Order for the clerk.
First item on our agenda this evening is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Is there a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any additions, corrections? Discussion? Not all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? Okay now, we'll go on to petitions and communications. If there's anybody that would like to speak to the council for a period of no more than five minutes, if you'll fill out one of the white cards at the back of the room, bring it up to myself or the clerk and you'll have a chance to do so. First is Cliff Singer on budgets.
Well, almost every year I come and tell you what you're doing wrong with the budget and this year I want to come and tell you what you're doing right with the budget. It's, first of all, I want to compliment the city council and the mayor and the staff on carrying through this tight financial times in reasonably good shape. Take a tiny bit of credit for that myself, having voted for higher taxes way back when and postponing expenditures, but it all goes, actually the credit goes all the way back to Hiram Pele who put the city in sensible financial management shape. And particularly the staff has done fantastic job of efficiency in government. I wanted to say one thing that you're doing this year that I think is highly desirable and that is I noticed there's a substantial increase in vocational training transfers from tax income and financing to the school district. There is nothing more important, you do many important things for economic development, but there's nothing more important than quality schools when it comes to attracting people to the community and supporting the rest of your economic development activities. And the school district is under terrible financial stress due to no fault of its own, I think, basically. There's also great opportunity here for Urbana to shine compared to Champaign unfortunately because of the problems that Champaign is having with its budgeting in the school district. So I encourage you to continue this. I hope you will find, I think that there's even more that you could do. There's a tremendous amount that the school district does that qualifies as vocational training and I see that you're taking advantage of those transfers and I think that's great. I hope you continue to work with them and talk to them not only about the vocational training but also as you are about resource officers in the schools and to try to help them in any way you can to make sure that children are actually competent in reading so that by the time they get to the vocational training programs, they can actually take advantage of them. Nothing's more important than that. I guess there's one thing that I continually say to you and there's one more chance this four-year period and that has to do with the pay for the mayor and the city council and 100% of the people who are going to come talk to you about this issue are for an increase in that pay, I'd like to tell you. So if you take that as the view of the public. The mayor is being paid to have $44,000 a year right now and that is less than one-half of the amount for many of your lead officers and he puts in nearly as much work or more, perhaps more, I don't know, he can say. And the problem with paying him less than half of the rest of them is that it cuts you off from, in the long term, it cuts you off from a tremendous pool of talent out there who are simply not willing, if they have a family and have to survive on median income or thereabouts or more or have to take a pay cut to do this, there are just a lot of people who just won't be willing to do it, who would make very good candidates when your current very competent mayor finally decides to set it aside. So, and for his sake as well, I think it really is appropriate that you should increase his salary. You should consider this a three-quarter time job. It's budgeted as a half-time job. It shouldn't be a full-time job. The mayor ought to be able to sell real estate in another town or pretend bar or whatever he needs to do to keep his career pathway open when he gets back out of this or practice law or whatever. So it shouldn't be a full-time job, but it's more than a half-time job. I strongly encourage you to budget as a three-quarter time job rather than a half-time job. Likewise for the city council members. City council pay has gone, has been static for almost a decade. I know that some of you are getting very frustrated with this business and you'll notice that there are very few people on the city council who have median income or less and a family to support and childcare expenses to take care of and there's a reason for that, there's several reasons for that, but one of is that it's just not worth the hassle for the $3,800 a year or whatever. So I strongly encourage you to redress, not only keep it up with inflation over a four-year period, but also to go back and redress the drop that's happened in the last 12 years. You really need about a 20 or 30% increase in that allocation. Finally, for those of you who are going to stay around, it is probably going to be necessary to readjust the tax rate and I want to steal your courage for that. We did it way back when. We kept the tax rate up when we could have cut it. And it's going to be necessary. It's much, again, what happens when you reduce, what happened when you reduced the tax rate was fine, city budget was in good shape, but what happened is the other taxing bodies take up the slack. And so it's really a question of just working with the other taxing bodies to have the overall tax rate stay reasonable. There is absolutely no reason that you should not re-increase the city tax rate by 5% or so as is necessary to keep your budget in shape without having to do drastic things to what you do. So with those words, I commend you again for your excellent work and commiserate with all of you. I'm so glad you're there and I'm here.
Any questions? Okay, thanks Cliff. Good to see you. Next is Sasha Meinrath for 12 West Illinois on the community wireless.
Hello, I was asked to speak for city council about an upcoming budget line item to buy equipment to build the beginnings of a community wireless network. For the past four years, I've been the project coordinator for the Champaign-Urbana Community Wireless Network. I should mention that QN, as it is called, is a consortium of programmers, researchers, businesses and local nonprofits. We were founded in 2000 and for the past four years, we've been developing some of the most advanced wireless software available anywhere in the world today. If anyone had read today's New York Times, there was an article talking about community wireless networks as the wave of the future. They stated, "Many businesses attract customers by being a Wi-Fi hotspot" and then go on to talk about all of the benefits that these networks are offering to their communities. I've given three documents, I guess, to city council members. The first is the social benefits of community wireless networks, which talks about benefits to local government, public health, schools and educators, citizens, community organizations and businesses. There's a plethora of different things that these things can do for our community. I've also given a brief overview of what community wireless network technology is. The basic fundamental idea is to create low-cost, high-speed broadband connectivity to the tune of 1/10th to 1/100th of the cost of today's wired systems. The third one is about a national summit of community wireless networks that's being held here in town through a coalition of the Community Wireless Network Group, Prairie Net, the University of Illinois and Free Press, which is a national organization that's thrown its weight behind this network. QN has the support of the Urbana Business Association. They recently passed a resolution supporting this medium of communication. QN is also supported by many of our local community members who, for the first several years of our existence, funded the entire project out of pocket. In 2002, QN received a $5,000 exploratory grant from the Threshold Foundation with the idea of prototyping equipment that can be deployed as cheaply as possible in communities both here and abroad. In 2003, we received $200,000 from the Open Society Institute solely to continue developing our software. We were one of three of 250 proposals that they received all over the world and we were chosen because of the strength of what we're developing here today. In 2004, we're hosting both this wireless summit, which will be a national coalition of politicians, community organizations, activists and researchers. And we have about $2 million in grants proposals outstanding with another, with $600,000 of that being in-kind donations that will be given to this project. This is a major initiative that's been undertaken. In 2005, we'll be developing two to three wireless networks internationally using our software and hardware. I bring this up because locally, we've been creating obviously a test bed in the community and the current budget proposal is a way to leverage the four years of development, the infrastructure that's already available, to build wireless network in the downtown region of Urbana and presents a strong, a powerful opportunity for giving low-cost bandwidth both to businesses and residents in the local area. I think it's a first step in delivering ubiquitous internet connectivity for all Urbana residents and it can deliver broadband connectivity for a fraction of the price of what people are paying today, thus allowing people who ordinarily would not be able to afford access to this vital medium, access to this resource. So I would strongly support this measure. I think it takes advantage of a lot of the work that we've done locally. It takes advantage of four years of development time by local and national, international developers who've worked on this project and it will interface quite well, in fact seamlessly, with existing infrastructure and can be utilized in the future to expand, to offer the same resource to more of our community. I've been asked to make myself available to answer any questions that folks have either now or when the discussion over the budget item comes up and I'm happy to do so. So thank you for your consideration.
I have a couple. Just, I mean, this is all Greek to me since I'm not all that knowledgeable about the latest technology and so what you're talking about is just being able to provide internet access someplace where you're not connected to a wire. Is that right?
It's internet access. It also allows us to do things like stream video, say from this meeting to the community, to have micro broadcasting, to have community web servers, email, web hosting. All of that can then be possible with tremendous cost savings.
And, well, okay. I didn't quite understand all of that that you said, but then getting to the cost savings, you say in here a tenth to one-hundredth of the cost. Right now, you know, like for me at home, I mean, I use the cable system to get my high-speed internet service and that's about $35 a month. And so how would this be different from that? I mean, other than the fact that I'm connected to a wire and this would not be connected to a wire?
Definitely the cost itself. For example, in Korea, they have wireless connectivity. You get eight megabits a second download speed. It costs $20 a month for that. What we've been developing locally is ways to share business-class DSL lines, T1 lines. We assume that it will cost about $3 to $5 a month for an end user to use this system on average. So tremendous cost savings and more bandwidth at the same time. It utilizes the economies of scale of buying bandwidth in bulk and then sharing it throughout a geographic area.
So whose system is it? I mean, I know who my provider is. May I pay Insight $35 a month? It's Insight System.
Right.
Whose system is this?
One would be buying the bandwidth from a local provider, SBC, Insight, McLeod, any of those, Volonet. And the system itself is simply the same way in your local house. You have, say, a router or an access point. This is just an extension of that. So you'd have, instead of an access point, you'd have a wireless node that can then bounce from house to house. So it'd be owned by whoever buys the nodes. In this case, I believe the city is allocating funding to buy the nodes.
So then if somebody wants to sign up for it and it costs $5 a month, then how does that happen?
The $5 a month is based upon like what the cost of the entire bandwidth is. So we've been talking about sharing a single DSL line amongst many users in the downtown area. The total cost of the system would simply be whatever the cost of that DSL line is. So it depends, if you're paying, say, $50 or $100 a month for a DSL line and let's say you have 20 users, the cost each user is the equivalent of 2.5, what, $5 a month?
So then, so who owns the DSL line?
The DSL line is, the same DSL line that you have at home, you could share with your neighbor simply by buying this equipment and installing it on both your houses.
Can I try to create a metaphor here that might help, Todd? It's, if you think about it, right now, when you wire a building, you wire a building and then when you get to the end of the building, that's all you can wire. So say you wire your house and that's it. They're not, you're not going to wire beyond that. There's no way of getting, you know, outside the house unless you dig under the ground and then there's some issue. So what you do is by creating, by making something wireless, your connection which comes in, which you use, usually you're not using it. What you do is you share it with your neighbors. So all of a sudden, by creating a wireless cloud out of this one line, instead of the limits of your house being the limits of service provision, it's the limits of as far as the wireless goes, which in this case, if it's house top to house top, you could take one DSL and share it with, what, 20 house tops. Whereas right now, one DSL goes into one house and that's the limit of your service provision. So if you think about it, it's kind of like having your water turned on all the time, but every so often you brush your teeth and take a shower and most of the time it's just running. Well, if there was some way in which other people could take advantage of the water that's running all the time, then you would, you know, then you would have that kind of cost savings. So usually when someone has a pipe into their house, they're using it for a fraction of the time that they actually can be using it. By sharing it, then all of a sudden, everyone can kind of use that resource within a certain area. But you need the wireless technology, the nodes and the access points to allow that to happen. I don't know if that clarifies, but it's-
Well, a little bit, but it's still, you know, if there's a system and people are going to be using it and paying monthly charges and they're paying to somebody and, you know, my understanding is that the proposal is for the city to buy nodes, but then not, you know, the rest of the system. So the rest of the system is owned by somebody else. And of course, that's an integral part of the system and you can't, somebody who's hooking up to the system doesn't just pay their $5 to the city because they're on, you know, within the range of the city node, then they have to pay for some of the other infrastructure as well. Am I right?
Well, in talking with city staff, we've been offered a DSL line that would help, would share bandwidth for the first part of this system. I think the idea is really to use this as a proof of concept to demonstrate how businesses and community members in the downtown area would utilize a system of this sort.
Still a little fuzzy. Pat, did you have a question?
Sure, I'll take a crack at it. Who's DSL line would this be?
Right now, I believe it would be the city's line that would be shared.
Okay, so DSL line the city already has or you're talking about the city buying, you don't know that?
I don't know.
Okay, just in a real simple way, if we did this, if we bought these nodes and got them up in downtown, I want to go sit in Crane Alley with my laptop and check my email.
Right.
Okay. I can't just sit down and do that. I need to be, I need to be, I have to pay something. I need to be registered as some monthly participant. No, Crane Alley would need, or the, or the-
Right now, what we're building is a free and open network. So end users do not have to pay-
Okay.
-to utilize it.
It's like a radio. If you have a trans, if you have a receiver and the radio's out there and you're within range-
I turn on the radio-
You turn on the radio and you can get it.
That's how I thought this worked. Okay, so the customers are using it, or the person who we want to be the customers of our downtown businesses and hang out outside, they don't pay. Who is it who's paying this $5 a month?
Okay, I think we're caught up on the $5. This is just the per-user charge being about a tenth, you know, if you were to break it down and have each person paying in their-
I see.
Equivalent share of this. It'd be a tenth to a hundredth what people are currently paying for their DSL lines.
Okay, so if the city bought these nodes and got them up, then the businesses would not have to pay-
Correct.
Whether the library, Iron Post, any place who's got, a place where people might want to do something outdoor, they don't have to pay anything.
Correct.
But their customers would be able to use this amenity because the city was providing it because we spent this money. Okay, and the money that we're talking about, that $18,000 and something, is for the equipment to do this?
Correct.
Does that include the DSL line or would that be an additional expense?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I believe that that's separate.
Just for understanding.
I am, what we've been talking about is to look at providing eight to 10 clouds in the downtown area. And so providing eight to 10 clouds in the downtown area, there's a lot of things that could go into that.
Clouds are the little boxes.
Clouds are the little, are the, it's kind of like a little mini radio station where in that area, you can get on to the computer within that certain cloud range, that range. And so what we've estimated, looking at the cost of the box, approximate number of nodes, outside access points, which have to be, you know, weatherproof, protective, and then we started talking about possibly some solar panels if we get run into power generation in some areas because we found out that there isn't power on top of every light post like we thought. There's some light posts that don't have them. And then looking at, what we're hoping to do is either carve off a piece of the city's DSL, or city's bandwidth, carve off a piece of the library's bandwidth, or actually there's been an offer of a donation of a DSL line from a city staff member. And so the goal is to prove the concept because this is one of the problems is until you can touch it and feel it and put your hands on it, you don't understand it. But once you can do that, it becomes very clear very quickly that, you know, that basically you get in range of this thing and all of a sudden you have access to these resources you didn't have access to before. So the issue of whether, certainly the wireless project over near the IMC area, which is where one of the nodes is, could provide some access, say, in Strawberry Fields, which is one of the areas we were talking about. What becomes tricky is we think about clouds overlap with one another and so, for example, if the city provides access here and we kind of spread it out from the city building and then we have access over from the IMC and then there's a house on Washington Street that's providing a DSL line access, what happens is people who are in the midst of this connect to the closest network. So sometimes the people will connect to the city network, sometimes they'll connect to Washington, sometimes they'll connect to the IMC. And so what we have is about, by the end of the year, about a half a million dollars worth of infrastructure already in the community in terms of software and hardware without the city even being involved in it. And the question on the table is, does the city want to participate in an infrastructure that already exists that in a way that provides an amenity to our downtown? And my answer to that is yes. Here's all the benefits that come from this and the marketing for our downtown. So the question on the table is, do we want to join this existing network which will provide, which is already providing access in some areas to help expand it in areas that we find to be priority areas for the city or not? That's, I hope that answers some of your questions.
So here's the question, Sasha.
Sure.
Between the library and the city building, you know, both of them are wired already and I don't know whether it's cable or DSL, but obviously we're online. Would that be, if the city bought nodes for various areas around there, would, are we close enough? I guess, I don't know if that's even the appropriate question, but the library and the city building cover the area that would take in downtown if we had these nodes or do we still need to get another main DSL line or whatever, main internet connection to launch off of?
In terms of connectivity, we right now have about 25 to 30 users sharing a single DSL line. So I think a large DSL line in addition to the ones that already exist should be enough.
So, but one is needed in addition to what already exists, is what you're saying?
Right.
And by what already exists, you're including the city building and-
No.
And the library?
No. If you're talking about using the city building and the library, that's probably more than adequate bandwidth.
Is there a limit to how many people can-
Right now, there's a limit to the number of nodes that can be on this. We don't think it'll scale beyond about 50 nodes at the top end.
How many people can use one node?
Oh, 254, I believe is the maximum number of any given node.
So this is if, if one node is like the radio station that's making this, it's got this broadcast area, 254 people can use the internet in that, from that transmitter.
Right, at any one time.
Or no more, and, okay. And what's the radius?
Radius. Usually, we like to keep it to about 100 to 200 meters radius for each node.
Okay, then when you talk about, then what's hooked up to the node? Are you talking about this DSL line is hooked up to the node?
So the idea behind this network is any of the nodes on the network can connect to the internet and in fact, multiple ones or only a single one can connect to the internet. And that bandwidth, that internet connection can be shared throughout the whole network. So if you have multiple nodes connected to the internet, this network will allow you to share for users to get on via any one of these multiple connection points.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, yeah.
I was just wanting to ask a question. I'm probably way off base, but a few years ago, when you had the deregulation of all of your telephone companies and whatnot, right? And then you allowed them to come back in. They heard a lot of advertisement from a lot of these other companies, but you didn't hear too much advertisement from Ameritech. So my question to certain people who worked at Ameritech, why didn't Ameritech do much advertising? And the reason for that was Ameritech owned all the lines and all the equipment and all these other people had to come through Ameritech to provide the service. So then, what, 10, 15 years ago, however, no, let's say eight, 10 years ago, McLeod came through and put all those T1 lines in and everything, all on everywhere. McLeod, I don't think is on the New York Stock Exchange. It's a private thing. So everybody who uses these T1 lines and whatnot from McLeod had to pay McLeod. So I think the question is, you're talking about all these nodes and everything, who owns the nodes?
It would probably be owned by a consortium of different organizations and entities. Individuals can own a node and put up a node and grow the network. Nonprofits or businesses have already done this. The city can own some of, like some of the core vital elements of the network to provide it to areas that the city wants to cover, like parks, like the downtown area. And then individual residents who've already joined the network and continue to want to join the network can continue to grow it. So one has to, in some ways, you have to think of it in terms of a resource where the more people utilize it, the stronger the resource itself becomes, which is different, I think, from a lot of the ways that we conceptualize these sorts of resources. And so as more people join the network, the network itself becomes stronger. One can access more information and utilize it for more types of things. And that's one of the major strengths of this thing. This is why, if you go to the New York Times, if you go to, I think there was just recently an article in Newsweek Magazine, I mean, these are fairly mainstream news sources, which are all talking about community wireless networks as being a very powerful force and one that's growing exponentially in its impact in the United States.
Fireman?
I have, I think, just two questions. With regard to some of the locations that have been listed, other sites like, and I think wasn't listed, where we've got the small park outside, just right outside the city building, outside the federal courthouse, the Champaign County Courthouse and the Urbana Administrative Building, would those be also accessible or would one be able to check, email, that sort of thing?
They could be made accessible fairly easily. Let me, very briefly, the reason why this idea came about, as it did, is I was working at Stratton Elementary School in Champaign and they, back in 1999 or 2000, got a brand-new computer lab with internet connectivity. They went completely unused after the school closed for the day and I think this is probably true of most city structures and most schools. They all have connections to the internet that go unused right about the time when everyone's coming home from work. This network allows us to take that same bandwidth that's been totally unused in the evening and share it with our community. And I think that's the type of strength, those are the sorts of economies of scale that this makes possible. This is why it's a very strong model for communities that already are paying for bandwidth that just goes unused. And that's what we want to take advantage of. That's what we want to make more efficient in the way that our community works and that's why it's taken off all over the place.
And would there also, would one be able to use or access the wireless, like inside? I'm thinking Silver Creek, they're going to do this coffee shop, if it's indoor, would they, someone be able to use that or is there any problem with the structures and interfering with the connection?
Different structures will lessen the throughput or the distance that it can- Different structures will lessen the throughput or the distance that it can travel, but we have indoor access points already that are fully operational. That's normal, and definitely part of what we're building is an indoor/outdoor system that can do both.
Okay, and then, I just have one last question on security issues. How does one protect, or is this, is it being built to protect from sort of, any sort of private information being taken if you're ordering something over the internet, that sort of thing?
Right. Obviously, any system, whether internet, wired, wireless, what have you, is only as secure as the end user makes it, which means that if somebody has their computer wide open, if somebody is sharing their credit card information on a non-secure internet page, it's not going to matter whether they're using a wired or a wireless system, it's still going to be insecure. Definitely, a system like this allows us to do things like put portals in the same way that AOL or any of these major providers have a portal. We can create a community portal that has information for the community, that has information on how to utilize this network. It's one of the, again, one of the benefits of having this sort of thing. But it really comes down to what the end user is doing with their own personal computer and how they are utilizing the system. And it's not a fundamental problem with wireless over wired. In many ways, wireless systems are very similar to cable DSL systems in that both are sort of like a party line on the wireless system. Anyone can listen in to the wireless packets that are being sent over the ether in the same way that on a cable DSL line, you can do the same exact thing. It's just a difference of medium. And it comes down to really what the end user is doing to protect themselves and make their own system secure.
Just to follow up with that, for example, do you have a cordless phone at home?
Yes.
So, I can go down to Radio Shack after this meeting and buy equipment to listen to your phone calls. Every time you're on the cordless phone, I can listen to everything that you have to say. So, for example, at the farmer's market, if vendors would like to use the wireless connection, since it's going, it would be, we'd have to dig up, we'd have to dig up street to provide a wired connection over to the farmer's market, but if we transmit a wireless connection to the vendors, then the vendors, if they want to take credit card payments, they can establish a connection with a site that is a secure site. You know, I'm sure you've seen the little lock that closes when you're about to put in your credit card. Similarly, they would do the same thing. They'd make a connection with the secure site, put the information in, or have a credit card runner, however they want that interfaces with that, and send the credit card information through. And then, the service, which they're using, securely sends back and says, yeah, they're, you know, this is not a fraudulent credit card number, this is real, go ahead, take the payment. And then, they can take the payment. So, what Sasha's saying is that the, a wireless works the same thing as a wired. In fact, your phone, you know, if you don't want your phone to be listened to, you actually have to encrypt it on the end of your phone and send encrypted voice over. Otherwise, it can be intercepted. Same kind of technology.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Otto?
I have some practical questions.
Sure.
I had some unfortunate experiences with wireless, high-speed wireless networks through work. And one of the things that we had was a VPN tunnel, and it was in a store that we had was located in a small town where they had high-speed wireless. And the problem was, when the leaves were on the trees, they were blocking and deflecting the signal. And so, you could get some throughput, but it wasn't reliable and it wasn't high speed.
Absolutely.
And it created tremendous problems for our enterprise computer system. And so, that's just one of my questions, it's sort of a practical question, but Urbana, fortunately, is a town with lots of very nice trees and houses surrounded with very nice trees. And how big a problem is that for a Wi-Fi signal? Is that, the leaves on the trees constitute a barrier to the signal?
Yes, what you're mentioning is called the spring effect. And we see it on any wireless network where there is foliage that comes out in the spring. The reason why, I believe the number of 28 nodes came about was by simply measuring the distances between spaces and figuring out if we put one every 100 to 200 meters, every node, every 100 to 200 meters, how many nodes would we need? And the reason for that, we have links up to 400 or 500 meters, but they do exactly what you're mentioning there. And so, by spacing them at 100 to 200 meters, we eliminate this problem. And that, in terms of building a strong backbone, that's vital.
The other question I have is, you know, I like the idea of networks and sharing and it gets stronger the more people that use it. I still have a little bit of a question, though, about the companies, whether it's SBC or the cable company, that are providing high-speed internet access to a user who has a node who's then sharing it.
Right.
They have a user agreement with those users, which defines how you can use that access that they're providing you. And I don't actually, I haven't read one of the agreements, but my understanding is that often, they say, you can use it, but you can't share it.
Right.
It's sort of like, you know, copyright law or something. You can make copies for your own use, but you can't give them to other people.
I've read several of these agreements-
Okay.
...over the years. There's a difference, A, there's a major difference between business-class DSL lines and T-1 connections, and residential-class DSL lines. In the user agreements of some residential-class DSL lines, they say that you cannot share it. We've actually heard from SBC spokesman, what they really mean is that you cannot resell it, with the idea being that you can't take this line that you're buying at a residential rate and turn that into a business proposition. We don't use any residential-class DSL lines on our existing system. And to avoid this problem entirely, I would recommend just using business-class or T-1 lines for exactly this reason. We believe, and the Electronic Frontier Foundation believes, that the not allowing people to share these sorts of residential lines is equivalent to what AT&amp;T did up until 1968, when finally, the Carter phone decision by the Supreme Court said, in fact, yes, you can have an answering machine, yes, you can split your phone line. It was actually illegal in the United States to put on your own answering machine, to split your own line, to even own your own phone, up until fairly recently. And it's a gray area, and it still has to be decided in court, which is something that we don't personally want to fight, but certainly will happen. But one can avoid that by simply using business-class DSL or T-1 lines to begin with.
Okay. And those user agreements, they don't care if you share it?
Right. There's two other issues are that there are now more and more wireless internet service providers and wired internet service providers that explicitly allow sharing. There's a group, Speakeasy, out of Seattle, its entire business model is encouraging their users to share. And the reason why, which is the second point, is that most of the money, or a lot of their money from internet service providers goes to servicing the last mile of their internet system. A tremendous amount of time from the workers goes into dealing with, you know, the human element of the system. And I'm certain that a lot, I know for a fact that several wireless ISPs in town are really excited by the idea of not having to deal with that last mile problem, by being able to simply give a single or several very large pipes into the system and to save money on the cost of having people going door-to-door to service it.
The, well, I guess that's something I would like to hear from legal about, is actually have somebody review the user agreements and make sure that we're not in some way putting the city in jeopardy. I, you know, I'm all for sharing as long as everybody on both sides of the table understands that's what's going on. I can think of practical reasons why, particularly the way I understand, like, cable DSL is structured where you have a loop that has a certain capacity, and, you know, it's, can usually handle 30 residential users, but if one person gets on and starts using it intensively, they're basically using it at the expense of the other people on the loop who will have less, a less robust connection than they would if that person wasn't hogging the bandwidth.
Which is, it's a fascinating business model in that you're basically paying for bandwidth that if you fully utilize, you cause trouble with their network.
Well, I mean, what they're doing is installing a certain amount of bandwidth on the assumption that you're truly a residential user who isn't going to fully utilize it, and so, they can offer you a lower price than they might if they had to do one line that went to each individual house in a hub-and-spoke sort of way. So.
I just want, could I just respond to Mr. Otto's concern? One, two things, one that we're looking at. One is, the city purchases its service through a little bit diff, it doesn't buy from McLeod or Soltech, it's the Illinois, what is it? It's the Illinois-
Century Network.
Century Network. And so, and actually, the wireless group has been in contact with the Illinois Century Network, sat down with them, and has reason to believe that this, that we can do something like this, although I think there's some more exploration that needs to happen. The second thing is, we can purchase a business-class DSL if it comes, you know, if the Illinois Century Network, if there's a problem with using it in this way. But one thing, the second thing is, most of the buildings in downtown that I know of, they share, they share a T-1 line. And this is a very common thing, this is not an unusual thing. You get one pipe into your building, and then, one of the places in the building agrees to service the others. So, in our building, for example, we share, all the way from Crane Alley up to Prairie Computing, we share a line, and we have ways of distributing bandwidth. So, this is really a very common thing, businesses do all the time. It doesn't make sense for everyone in a building to get, it's almost like everybody in the building getting like a separate water connection or something, you know, instead of, you know, just meters that go to every single person. And so, I think that there are, you know, we need to look at that issue, but there's definitely a lot of precedent that we can look at that would allow it.
Sure. I mean, all I, and I'm not opposed to this at all, I just, I want to make sure that we've looked at the user agreements and we're not violating our contractual-
Absolutely.
-obligations. And if we're not, then, you know, there's no objection. But if we sign a contract, we have to live up to it regardless of whether or not other people are violating it with impunity. So.
Okay, anything else at this point?
I just want to mention, just for anyone who happens to be watching this on TV, that you can find more information at communitywifi.org, and that the Champaign-Urbana Community Wireless Networks website is cuireless.net. And that both of those sites have a lot of information, actually, the same information that I've shared with the city council members is on there also. Thank you.
Any other petitions in communications? We have a presentation to make. If Mr. Gray would come up, our Public Works Department was, received an award from the American Public Works Association Illinois Chapter, 2004 Public Works Project of the Year, awarded to the City of Urbana for the US Route 45, O'Brien Drive-Antony Drive intersection improvement in Urbana, Illinois. And I'll thank you for, some of the features about this project were the complexity moving an intersection and accommodating the new stacking requirements for the, for Anthony Drive and so forth, right next to I-45, so the geometrics were very tight there. It had to be done on time and within budget. We had to satisfy existing businesses, keep the roadway open so that they could stay in business during the road improvement. Of course, we had the farm and fleet being, opening up at a specific date, and it was a contractual requirement for Public Works to have that project done in a timely fashion. So, all of these added up to an award-winning project for Urbana Public Works. So, congratulations. We'll go right to reports of standing committees since there's no old business. Mr. Hayes, who's chair?
Oh, I think it is me. Because he was, Mr. Hayes was the last one. So, we're looking at Resolution Number 2004-05-02, uh, 012R, Resolution approving the 2004 update of the capital improvement plan for the City of Urbana. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the capital improvement plan. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Chenoweth?
Can we take the, next to an omnibus?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have traffic commission items. The first one's ordinance number 2005-05-057. That refers to an ordinance amending Schedule A of Section 2362 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, increasing state speed limits in certain zones, referring to Philo Road. And second, we have ordinance number 2005-05-058, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets. This refers to Summer Drive and Maple Street. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion. Ms. Wyman?
I just, the clerk pointed out, there's actually a typo. It should be ordinance numbers 2004 for both of those.
Okay.
So, just note the correction.
Note the correction.
Okay. Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. who?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.